Hi there, it's Rachel Beckston with Rachel Beckston Connects. Today, I would like to introduce my next podcast guest, the Chair of the Vancouver School Board, Victoria Young. This is her first in-depth interview since her departure from the ABC party. More importantly, Victoria talks about her passion for education, her journey, and so much more to do with youth and her story. I'm proud to introduce Victoria Young, Chair of Vancouver School Board on Rachel Beckston Connects.
So today on the podcast, I'm very, very privileged to welcome a woman by the name of Victoria Young, and she is the Chair of Vancouver's School Board. She plays a vital role in education in the city of Vancouver. Victoria, I would like to welcome you to Rachel Beckston Connects. Thank you for joining me today.
Thank you for having me.
It's great that you're here. There's just so many things around education, and as I was thinking about what to chat with you about, it took me so long because I just, there was just so many questions I had, but I've narrowed them down. And I want to start, I always like to learn more about who the person is behind the title or the role. So can we start by learning a bit more about who you are? So, you know, where did you grow up and what's your career path been like, your education? And what led you to become the Chair of Vancouver School?
I was born and raised in a small town in Nova Scotia by two immigrant parents, both born and raised in Jamaica, and moved to Canada in the seventies and settled in Nova Scotia eventually. And so I, I had the pleasure of being raised in a small town, but then also having close proximity to the city of Halifax. And through my childhood, my parents instilled a lot of the importance of education, which, you know, my brother, sister, and I always felt like we were really important parts of our upbringing. And, and so I eventually came to Vancouver after I had finished university. And I wasn't sure what was next. I was working at a pub in my hometown.
Yeah.
It was one question that my mother said to me at one point, and she says, you know, "Do you plan on working at the pub forever?" And that was enough for me to make the decision to move to Vancouver. I had some friends here, and three weeks later, I arrived with my two suitcases and a bicycle. And I love this city and have considered it home since. And so that was in 2009. And so I built my, my life here, my adult life, and I love to call Vancouver home. I did leave for a year at one point because I thought if I can start fresh in a new city, like I did in Vancouver, then I can do it anywhere. And I promptly returned because this is truly my home and I want to, I want to be able to live and work here and give back to my community here. So I, I haven't left and I don't plan on leaving. And early, in the early 2000s, I decided to go back to school and I took a master's program where I met people from all over Canada and the world. It was an international program. And one of the people that I met through my program actually lived in Vancouver and, you know, discussed politics with me. And that's how I got introduced really to politics and to running in Vancouver. And I haven't looked back. I originally thought I was going to help campaign and help get out the vote. And one thing led to another, and I was running for school board, which has been the greatest privilege of my life, which is, you know, it's, it's, I haven't looked back. I absolutely love it.
Yeah, it's, it's a brave thing to do. It's, it comes with so many privileges and also a lot of responsibility. And people love what you're doing and some people might say, "I don't like what you're doing about this, and I love what you're doing about that." So I imagine you have to kind of, any role in politics have, you know, that thicker skin to kind of, there's always going to be someone who's on this side and on that side. But I think I always admire people who get involved because they really put themselves out there.
I also think getting involved in education is, can be very different from other politics because, you know, we're responsible for the future of a lot of people's children. And so that, that people take very seriously. And I think that there's a different lens on us as school board trustees than perhaps the Vancouver Park Board.
Yes.
All very important positions, but a different, a different emphasis on the role that we play in the city.
Yes, and behind every child is a parent, right?
Sometimes lots of parents, sometimes, you know, blended families, sometimes multiple
Exactly.
stepparents. So yes, there are, there are lots of caring people behind students, for sure.
Now, what was your experience like in school? I'm just wondering that because as you're working in the education space, working to, you know, support young ones now, what was your school time like? Is it a positive one?
Lots of great experiences, some I look back on cringe. Things are very different from when I was in school. And I, you know, my parents were educated and I, my brother and sister learned to read really early, but I didn't. And so there was a point in my life where I was sent, thankfully had the, we had the resources to send me to Helen's Reading World. And I would sit with Helen after school and she would help me learn new ways to read and to better my reading skills. So I think that was in grade three, three or four, because I wasn't reading up to the level that I think my parents wanted me to, although I wasn't, I don't know if I was falling behind in school. Now that I think back to it, that's a good question over the dinner table at the next family gathering. But I socially, I think I did okay. I had lots of friends, but I struggled in a few areas along the way. And I always felt a lot of pressure because my siblings were, were older and smarter, very, you know, intelligent. So I felt like I always had a lot of pressure. But I think small-town living, things were different. We didn't have the pressures of the internet and of social media and technology. So, you know, I, I look back with fond memories. And I think I was given all the tools that I needed versus what it looks like now. And there's a lot of different needs of students in our district, which I'm looking forward to talking to you about today.
Yes, the internet and phones have changed everything. And I think we're around the same age, so we, we didn't have to manage those. We had our own obstacles, of course, but we didn't have to manage those. And I think I'm, I'm thankful that we didn't, and I didn't. I'm thankful I didn't have to, you know, have the social media piece because that's tricky for young people, especially youth. But we'll touch on that in a second. Your education, you have a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Acadia University, Masters of Business Administration from Australian Institute of Business. So obviously you clearly see the value and you've mentioned your parents instilled that value in you from a young age, the value of education. Can you talk about, about your personal feelings and love for education? So if you're, I know you're, it's hard to say because from a young age, your parents have really kind of built that into your character and emphasized the, the value of it. But can you talk for a minute about your feelings on education and your love for it?
My, my love for education started when I, I think I saw all the different needs and requirements, but really the different resources that are available. And part of my job that I love the most, which is what keeps me really excited every day, is are the different resources available. So we have alternative schools, we have alternate schools, there are different district programs and choice programs. And the need for us to adapt to the different climate today versus 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and what's going to be different five years from now is what keeps me going in creating sustainable policies and, and systems in place to be able to adapt to the, all the changing needs of our district.
Yes, there are, I like what you said there about, you know, adapting. And because it's, it's a constant evolution and just, I imagine you're just always on your toes, kind of, you know, thinking of the next solution.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, and we're in a, in, I think we'll go into kind of what my role is, but we're in a, in a interesting place where our, we sit as a board and we are there to govern and to create good policy. But we really rely and work heavily with the staff and they're the experts. They have been doing it their entire careers and their lives where we come in with different sets of skills. So, you know, we have accountants and we have PhDs in chemistry or, you know, masters in business. But everyone on the board brings a different, a, a, a different look at what's important to us and what we think is important to the district. And that's why I think we collectively work so well together as we all bring different skills, but then really rely on the relationship that we have with the educational experts and help to develop and to implement the operational changes that are, are required by our policies.
So I guess just leading up on that to step ahead, can you talk about your role? So how would you describe your role, Victoria, and kind of what your day looks like?
Sure. So there's a, there's a, there's a structured system where we are nine trustees in Vancouver. We are all elected. And so we were, this, this board was elected in 2022. And we, we work together, we have all varying views on, you know, what is important and what is a priority. And our job is to look at policy. We're here to build sustainable policies, to, to do our due diligence and all the decisions that we make, gather information and help inform, that will help inform our decision. And then we work, we have one employee and that is a superintendent. And then the superintendent is responsible for, is essentially our CEO. And Helen McGregor, our current superintendent, then is responsible for our 7,700 employees in the district. And so we have fif, we have just over 52,000 students in our district. We have 18 secondary schools and 89 elementary schools. And, and so there's a lot of work that goes into the operations of those, of those different schools and those different school communities. And so we rely heavily on our relationship with Helen and the district staff who work alongside her every day. And so there's different directors of instruction and they all have their own, their own specialty. So our, our job is to help, is to rely on them to provide the information to help us inform decision. And then myself as Chair, I am the representative of the board. So I usually speak publicly on behalf of the board and I, I chair the meetings, our public meetings. And then we also have a vice chair who chairs our private meetings and is responsible, has a few other responsibilities such as teacher appeals. And they, they also work directly with staff to help us kind of manage the day-to-day. And we meet weekly, we do agenda setting for both our board meetings and our committee meetings. And so we have, we currently have four standing committees that we are all responsible for chairing as well and being members of that committee. And then we also have our stakeholder groups and our rights holders have seats at that table as well.
Okay.
And so it's, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of meetings and a lot of responsibility to work together, which I think has been a really great experience for all of us who come from different, whether it be political parties or different areas or different personal priorities. The requirement is, is that we work together and it's quite beautiful when it comes to our job because our job is to, to govern kids and their futures. And so we really buckle down and, and I, I would like to say that I think we do, do that well. And I know that some boards may not. But, but we've been, over the last two years, I really respect my colleagues on the board, especially because we do come from such different backgrounds and viewpoints.
Yes, and that's a lot of people getting together with different backgrounds and viewpoints. I imagine that public education and you and your team overseeing this can be challenging at times. As we've talked about, there's a diverse group of needs, diverse group of students with various learning styles, mental health challenges perhaps, learning needs perhaps. There's some children with, you know, dyslexia or whatever it may be in the classroom and other autism, ADHD, whatever it may be. Knowing your dedication for what you do, and, and just backing up a second, I met Victoria, we were seated at the same table at a fundraiser, I believe, for the Women's Hospital. And it wasn't until the end of the, it was a lunch, actually a lunch. And it wasn't until the end of the lunch that I even knew that you were the Chair of the Vancouver School Board. And you were so lovely and we chatted, I think, exchanged numbers at the end. And then after I realized that you were the Chair of the Vancouver School Board, and I thought, wow, that you're just such a humble person and so passionate and so kind. So on first impression, and I, I remember I called you once with a question about my own child and you responded immediately with some tips and advice and that was much appreciated. So my personal experience with Victoria has been very positive. I have to, I have to say that because I'm very, very grateful for that. So, so that's why I say, knowing your dedication for what you do. I'm sure that there must be some kind of, you know, sleepless nights and, and worries as you're kind of thinking about new ways to serve and support students in, in various areas that are evolving or that maybe there's limited funding or you feel maybe there aren't, you know, enough resources there. Let's just say, you know, you, you had, you know, a windfall of money, but you could, you could take on maybe, you know, a few issues. What is one of the first issues that you would really take on like with full enthusiasm? And I'm not, this doesn't mean you prioritize it over another. It's just, you know, what is one that you, you believe really needs some, potentially some attention? And if there was, you know, that windfall of resources and funds, where would you maybe discuss with your team potentially using that?
I have a long laundry list I could provide. I would say the first priority would be teacher support. Because if you support the teachers, then they can support kids. And we, the, the funding formula that the province uses to support each district, you know, is, is, is structured in a way that perhaps sometimes could, could be tweaked. I think what I loved to see in the election that happened last month was some focus on education. And yes, that's campaigning and a lot of, a lot of things are said during the campaign that, to get votes. But I'm, I really trust that this government will do what they say they're going to do and provide more teacher supports. And I'm not sure if you were, are, are privy to that, Rachel? But I, the, the promise or the initiative to add a support in each classroom in the province, that, that promise was made or that, I, I don't know if it was a, a promise, but it was definitely suggested as a campaign tool. And I'd really like to see that. I think there's, that is extremely important with the way that our, the, the way that our school system has changed over the years, that is definitely a priority. We don't, also with the introduction of technology, that creates so many more behavioral concerns and, and in terms of concentration also. So having help in the classroom would be a huge benefit. And then I think mental health, mental health among students and staff should be a priority. You know, I, I have the pleasure of, of looking after my own mental health. And, you know, I, I see my therapist every two weeks and I have, I use exercise as a, as a way to de-stress. And I, I have all these tools that I've developed over the years, but not everyone has that. They don't have the resources to do that and they don't, sure as heck don't have the support I think that we could offer. And I, again, we, we deal with a lot of different types of staff in our district. And, and so I, I think mental health would be a, a priority. I could go on. I think, you know, expanding on music and arts programs, expanding clubs. I think there's a, for, especially for students, the sense of belonging is really important in those formative years. I played badminton in, in high school. I also was part of the chess club. And so I think that there's so many different clubs that, and again, we need to think about the district more than just education. We need to think about some students go home to places where they don't feel like they belong. So we need to increase the places in school that they feel like they belong. They can come to school early and be in the band, or they can stay later and learn about financial literacy or be on the volleyball team or just increasing those, those outside opportunities that aren't perhaps in the curriculum. I could go on. Technology?
No, yeah, that's why it's such a hard question.
Let's, let's put, you know, let's have a, a system where we have technology for all. So, you know, half the kids in the classroom who have brand-new iPads or, or their own personal digital devices, now we have the option to have one for everyone in school. So when those teaching, those classes do start, everyone is, is on the same page and there's equitable learning.
Can people donate to the school, to the Vancouver School Board or the region in which they live in for these types of things?
Absolutely. We do have, so you can donate directly to the PACs. So the Parent Advisory Council for each of the schools. But then there's also an option in our, our, our school board. Our, what is it called? I should know the name. It has a clever name. But there's an option to donate and there's a dropdown menu. So when parents are, are paying their school fees or they want to donate specifically to a team or group, there is a dropdown menu on our VSB website that you can click directly on what that money is to go toward. And that could be a band program, it could be a sports program. And I'm going to give a quick plug. I'm in the works of trying to develop a, a pet project that has to do with, and, and if I say it, it'll come true. And so that's why I want to talk about it more. But one of the things I'm, I'm trying to do over the next, a next year and a half is to create a art installation. And that's with the help of, and I've met with lots of different community partners along the way so far. And that's going to be a tactile art installation. And so that will be developed and produced by students in our district who may be visually impaired or, or other. And so that will be developed with our, one of our district art teachers. And so that's what I'm currently working on. And so I, I met with someone from the district who then set up a dropdown option, which is, well, you will get a taxable receipt if you donate to that program because we are a charitable organization as well for, for certain items. And so that's, that's one of my many kind of pet projects I'm working on that is not related directly to my role as Chair. But just as a trustee, I think it's important to increase opportunities, which also gives me the, the opportunity to also plug all of our community partners. So the city of Vancouver and their sport hosting department has, has provided immense opportunity for our school-aged kids in the district. They've given us lots of tickets. They invite us to, each year, they've invited us to the Rugby Sevens on the Friday. And so kids during the day come and get to see some for the first time what professional sport looks like. And a couple of years ago, when I initially went, it was, you know, kids showing up and not really understanding the game. And if you know Rugby Sevens, it's usually an opportunity for people to dress up. And it's, it's kind of, it's kind of interactive with the crowd. And so you go and people are dressed in costume and it's amazing. And so last year, when I went with some kids from the district and, and parents and teachers, kids have started to dress up in costume to attend on the Friday. So it is, it, it's such a cool experience to see it year over year expand. And thousands of kids show up now and are a part of this, you know, this opportunity that, that these community partners have offered to us. And so I'm working with, you know, Innovate BC to get students involved with the Web Summit that's coming, formerly called, what was that called, Rachel? The one in Toronto? Anyway.
I'll look it up and I'll link, I'll link to it below.
So it's now, because it's moving from Toronto to Vancouver, it's called Web Summit. And it, it, you know, I'm working with them to create some opportunity for students there. And so they have, it also, I'm, you know, I'm talking to Invictus Games and all of these other organizations that are doing great things in our community and being able to offer that to students who otherwise wouldn't be able to attend. And so I'm going to give a quick thank you to all of those wonderful people who, who want to see kids and want to be able to show them what life looks like outside of school.
All of those things sound amazing. You're obviously investing a lot of time into those and it shows your passion to, well, and they seem to be working very well. You mentioned thousands are now coming to this Rugby Seven event annually?
It is, yes.
Yes, that's amazing. And you're right to say, often, you know, we don't know what one's home life, a student's home life is like. So often, you know, they spend a lot of, well, they do spend a lot of time at school and often that is their place of refuge or in their, or a place of safety, a place of community support. And so having a variety of options for them to be able to not only enjoy that time, but learn and thrive in that space is, is vital. And you seem to be doing, you and your team are doing very good.
And be authentic. I think school is a place where you find yourself and you, you take risks and you test boundaries and you find out what, you know, who you are. And so we, I, my hat goes off to staff because we walk into a school and they know all the, all the kids' names, they know what's happening in their lives, they know who they're becoming and who they were. And they're so welcoming and accepting of these kids who are just figuring life out. And they help them navigate it and they help them figure out what happens after, after the school bell goes off, what they're doing on the weekends. You know, there's Backpack Buddies, which is an organization that we, we work with who send food home with kids at the end of a Friday because they might not be getting the food that they need outside of school. And hats off to the provincial government, to the federal government, who also support us in feeding kids every day at our schools. And we have incredible partners, incredible teachers. There's a, a teacher at Lord Roberts who has developed a, a food curriculum and teaches kids how, shout out to Teacher Brent, because they're teaching kids how to make healthy meals, balanced meals, and, and the ease at which you, kids can then do it at home and, and be able to teach their parents, which they come back, you know, some kids have never had kale before. And so they're learning how to, how to make a kale salad, how to, how to have, you know, how to stew chicken or how to make a, a, other, you know, quinoa. It's really great being able to be part of these programs and you show up and kids are learning how to say new words and cook new foods and share meals and clean up after together and do the dishes together. And so these are skills that quite often, you know, some kids don't learn at home or, or, or could use more education in. And, and we love to see it. And then they go home and teach their parents, which is, which is really beautiful part of the, the parent becoming a student.
Yes, I know that when I went to school, I, I wasn't taught, it wasn't a part of the curriculum, anything to do with food or cooking. And to this day, I really don't cook much. Luckily, my husband does. Certainly I can feed my children, but I can't, you know, they're, they're not going to get a large variety. There's probably about four things on the menu that rotate if it's me in the kitchen. So it's great to have that implemented. So, you know, there's, there's also the challenging part. So when you decided to run for the Chair of Vancouver School Board, what was your, what was in your mind? What was going through your mind? It's not for everyone. I always say to people close to me, I could never be in a, in a, in a public-serving role. I'm far too sensitive for that. But we need leaders to do those things. We need leaders who can really like, you know, take it and, and, and run with it and do what you do. What appealed to you? Did you have apprehensions? Can you talk about that?
So I, I'll take a step back because when I decided to do my masters, I was, had been at my job for some time and felt, I don't sit still well. And so I got to a point where I said, okay, is it time for a new job or is it time to go back to school? And I ultimately chose to go back to school while working full-time, which then was a learning experience, not just about the content I was learning and my masters, Was a learning experience, not just about the content I was learning and my masters, but also around time management. I then had to pick and choose. Do I wanna go to book club tonight? Or do I wanna study and write my paper? Do I wanna go play soccer with my friends? Or I'm gonna have to do some reading. And so then I. The the amount of time required to do uh, a master's degree while working full time was nothing I could have ever imagined. And that was a little bit of a a reality check for me. It was very humbling. And so I. Once I was done, my masters and this, this opportunity came up, I realized I hadn't, I hadn't watched Netflix in two years. I hadn't done all these things in about two years. And so, you know, I I slowly started to introduce and. Incorporate these things back into my life. And one, one day when I realized how many episodes of a Netflix show I'd watched, I thought, I, this is, this is, I gotta, I gotta stop this. I need to find something more efficient to do with my time. And so when this opportunity came up, I honestly. Thought about it overnight. And I did not, I, that is all I needed. Realized how important it was to be part of this. I'm a product of of public education and. I think it's really important for people to give back in whatever way they can. And this is, this is, this came to me at the perfect time. And it it presented to me and. I didn't consider saying no, but what I needed, I I immediately. Wanted to jump at it, but also told myself to sleep on it one night before I I jump in and and haven't looked back. And so the. Getting elected was was wonderful, but then also having the trust of others on the board to then elect me as Chair. Um, twice now, and that vote comes up again at the end of this month. Which I have full intention of 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 asking for people's support again for this position. Um, so it's just been, it's been great because leadership looks different to everyone. And. There are some people on the board who I I work directly with who don't want the leadership position of Chair or Vice Chair. But want to be a leader in other places. And so we're able to offer that in our committees. In our external committees. So we sit on a lot of the City of Vancouver. Um, advisory committees or advisory councils and uh, uh, committees. And uh, and then sometimes, you know, leadership look is is not being in a leadership position. It's knowing when to step back and have someone else be that, be that person. So it's uh, uh. As much as I'd like to say, I I am the spokesperson for the board, the board is comprised of nine absolute winners who uh. Who are really good to each other and have provide each other with the information that we need to be able to do our jobs the best we can.
Okay. Nine absolute winners. So I'm gonna have to have all nine on.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, and all different viewpoints. And that's the, that is why I think this job is so fulfilling. I learned so much from my colleagues um, each day. I disagree a lot with them. But. Of course. And so, yeah, it's it's and and everyone comes at it with a different uh, uh. A different personality and a different way of doing things. And so, you know, some people are more. Educated on the Robert Krul side of things, some are. And so we use, we have our own different uh, um. Uh, weapons of choice in the way that we uh, respectfully work with each other and it's pretty great.
That's awesome. Um, that this is a, this is a, an area that I don't wanna focus a lot on. Um, I think he's spoken to this, so I just wanna run over it quickly. There's other areas that I wanna kind of go through before I let you go. Um, but uh, obviously elephant in the room, uh, you part ways with the Vancouver ABC Party. Uh, you were quoted in the Vancouver as saying, start of quote. The trust the people of Vancouver placed in me during the twenty twenty-two municipal election is not taken lightly. And while differences do indeed come and go for elected officials. The imperative to serve in the public interest versus private interest is one that is non-negotiable. End of quote. So you clearly take your role seriously, even when it means making what what I imagine was a tough decision and a hard one. Do you wanna speak to it briefly? Is there anything else to say about it?
Sure. Um, I. I think that we're in a position that has a lot of eyes on us. And. To take advantage of the position that we're in, I think is is a disservice to the people who have trusted us. And I. I don't take this job lightly. I. I'm here to to be of service to the community, to listen to their email, or to their voices, to read their emails. And Rachel, like you, you know, call you back and talk to you about what's bothering you and and what's important to your family. And how do I then? Help your family in the work that I do. And I think as soon as the noise becomes. Distracting. It it's when I need to take a step back and kind of reevaluate why I'm here. And. A lot of great people are doing wonderful things, but when it becomes a distraction to the work that I've been elected to do, I can no longer. I'm no longer aligned with that. And that that's the the fork in the road that I came to. My colleagues are are all great um, and are willing to show leadership in other ways, but this is the. This is the the first, I guess, sign of leadership in that group that I could have shown, cuz I. Do not align with trying to remove a body that is there to hold people accountable. Like I take my integrity very uh. It it's important to me and I take it seriously.
No, I think that's, that's great. No, I I appreciate you commenting on it. And um. I think the quote says it all and and you added to that by um, enhancing that some. So thank you for for addressing it. I appreciate it. So I have discussed with you, um, obviously this is a passion point for me. So I'm sorry if I'm on my soapbox for a moment. Uh, but I have a a wonderful six-year-old, soon to be seven tomorrow, uh, son. He's a neu- neurodiverse. He has moderate ADHD. Um, statistics show us, it's estimated that approximately ten percent of students. In Canadian uh, elementary schools have ADHD. I would imagine that number is low due to, you know, a lot of uh. Young girls especially are are undiagnosed due to lack of obvious signs like hyperactivity. They are, they sometimes don't have those types of symptoms. So I would think that number would be higher, but that's just a guess on my part. Uh, and. I focus on this part um, because I've I've heard a lot from, you know, uh, school boards and teachers and just that there's not the resources and. Uh, what they need for ADHD. And it's kind of as though um, I see, I see wonderful support for children with with autism for sure and. That's needed and that's vital and excellent. And I'm so happy it's there. Um, but I wonder about ADHD. Um, I've often been told that unless my son has autism or. Runs with a very low IQ, that he can't get the support that he needs. So he doesn't need a teacher with him all day, every day. But I would love it, love it, love it if all teachers and bless them, I know they work incredibly hard. So please don't get the wrong idea that. Uh, I don't respect teachers. I do very much respect them, was on the board of my youngest child's school and. Fought for um, higher salaries for them. Um, but I do think that teachers should be required to be um, educated on. Neurodiversity. Um. So I'm just wondering, you know, my son has experienced a lot of bullying and isolation in his public elementary school. It's not in the Vancouver School Board. So it's in other districts, uh, not in yours, but um, it is in the province of British Columbia. And so I I imagine others are experiencing that as well with children with ADHD. And I see that on the message boards on on Facebook and such. Um, what are your thoughts on, you know, ADHD right now in the public school system and any thoughts on these challenges or? I don't know, any solutions or anything that the parents can help with in in solving this?
It's a tough one. It is. And I first wanted to acknowledge, um, you know, your concerns with the way that the. Funding is structured because I would agree in the way that we, you know, are funded. It it, it makes sense on paper, but if you're in a classroom, um, you know, behavioral issues can. Let me, let me restart that. The way that that uh, the the province funds. As you mentioned, for some districts, um. Quite often ADHD uh, creates a. A disruption in the classroom for some kids. Uh, and that maybe isn't funded like, it, well, it isn't funded. Like a child who has autism. And so um, I spoke to a parent recently whose child it has both ADHD and autism and. Uh, nothing changed between the child having ADHD and then being diagnosed with autism, except for the funding. So, one-to-one care now in a classroom where nothing changed, you know, year over year, except that. They were able to get that diagnosis. And and the disruption their child has in the classroom is still the same. And so I think. You know, there's a lot of advocacy opportunity for us uh, as a district and as uh, of the. The entire Board of Trustees or the Association of Trustees in the province, which um. We are all members of and we bring these advocacy points to them often at our AGM and at our conferences that we have annually. Because the way that we're funded is exactly how we show up in the classroom. And. Um, and I do think that that needs to be looked at and which is, I think, what the government's. Uh, was doing in their last campaign over the last few months because they realize. The importance of education in our community is is how kids then show up in our community outside of school. And so if we don't support them in the classroom, we, you know, they won't be prepared for what comes after, after a a high school. So the frustration is i- is beyond just you and your family and. Um, and that's something uh, which is on a top priority with our district. We've just, um, we've spent the last year building and developing a strategy for an advocacy subcommittee. And so that was. Approved at our last board meeting of the strategy and and what the priorities are going to be. Um. So we have uh, two of our trustees who are spearheading. The the subcommittee and they will go directly to community, to levels of government, to. You know, to talk about what our priorities are and what's important to us. And then we bring, we can also bring those. So. An example, um. We'll bring that to our B C School Trustee Association, um, our AGM to then help have them advocate. To our ministry for more funding or for increased opportunities here or there. And so last year, one of the big ones that our district brought to our AGM to ask that the B C S D A advocate to the. Uh, ministry on was funding for EAs. So we, you know, we struggle getting educational assistance and then also uh, ECEs, early childhood educators. So we are the Ministry of Education and Childcare. Yet, the only funding we get for childcare annually um, indefinitely is for one staff member. And we already. Were incorporating that staff. We were using funds from our schools uh, for that position already. And so it was, it was a little. It was, it was great to receive. We'll take that money. But it's also, you know, something that we've had to do for years without that fund. So now that they're called the Ministry of Education and. Childcare, our expectation is that the funding will look differently and hopefully will expand. Um, which will uh, then, you know, lead us to ask for more advocacy. And through that advocacy and through the motion that we as a district brought to our school trustees to then lobby the ministry, they ended up giving uh. Uh, and having a huge funding announcement to go directly towards ECEs and EA. So we do. Our our voice is being heard and it sometimes is, you know, politics. Uh, you you have to go through the the normal channels, which can be really frustrating. But I assure you, we're doing it. And we are showing up. And we are, you know, we only have one J AGM annually. And so. We, I've I've already got preparation for my motion to bring because. We struggle with finding people to work in Vancouver because it is the most expensive city in the province and. And through collective agreements and bargaining, you know, teachers are not allowed to be paid more. Um, here in Vancouver than say Williams Lake or Prince George or or in the valley because that's not, you know, that that isn't the agreement. So I'm I'm trying to find innovative ways to be able to introduce. Um, uh, these skilled workers into our our district. But so back to, back to, you know, funding for classrooms and and getting the needs for uh. Needs, ge- getting the needs met, our student needs met. It it is a long process, but we're. You know, we're doing everything we can to get those funds. Um, and maybe it's time for us to to ask the government to look at the way that they do. Their formulas. I know that they they look, they reevaluate them often. But but we are here to advocate. And so thank you for sharing your um, your story with me. And I know we've spoken. Lots over the last uh, a year, but it's, it's really frustrating at times and um. And there's never enough money, you know, for for everything that is on our priority list. And though we've seen. You know, funding increase over the years, we're also, you know, that funding goes toward. Teacher salary because we also wanna make sure that we're supporting teachers and the great work that they're doing. Um, and all the staff in our, in our district. So it's. It is a dynamic job, I'll tell you that.
No, it's a tough one. And you know, ADHD shows up in a lot of different ways, right? It does show up in that kind of very disruptive way. Uh, my son's uh, ADHD exhibits itself in a very different way. And he is more, um. You know, he's been bullied verbally and and physically, um, horribly.
Sorry to hear. That's horrible.
It is. And he's been, um, you know, just people that, people, it's getting a little bit better. He's at a wonderful. Um, land-based school right now in Salsuri, um, which has an indigenous component. Um, so he's there for this year. See how the rest of the year goes. Um, but you know, my main concern around that is, is having the. Eyeballs and the ears on the kids and the the bullying. So I guess that leads into my next question, which doesn't just affect kids with ADHD. But all, but all children and youth. And that's bullying. Um, and I've been open with, about this with you as well, that. My six-year-old uh, has experiences severely. Um, my older son is um. All my children are 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 children of color, but my older son is is has darker skin. So he's more obviously a boy of color. And has been called racial slurs on several occasions, which I consider to be extreme bullying. And that's just not okay, as I'm sure you would agree.
Absolutely agree.
And so what is the policy about bullying? Is it a provincial policy? Is it a Vancouver School Board or Surrey School Board policy? Um, and what does one do um, to kind of, you know, uh. Where would they write to, to write a letter? This is what I'm experiencing. What can be done about this?
We have, uh, at our school board, we have, I I just pulled up some notes here because we do have um, a few. First of all, I'll start with saying that our, we foster school communities that are inclusive, where. And where kids see themselves. And so that's a huge priority and something that this board has really focused a lot on. Um. A- and I think it's important for your kids to show up to school and see people like them and see people in leadership positions and in guardian positions. Who they can feel safe going to and who may look like them. Um, and look different than than, um, you know. The the majority of student, of teachers in our district. So that's a big priority. We. You know, we've, we've uh, had a motion last year around budget time to put, to allocate funds. To go towards HR that can then um, increase those uh, a. Those where kids will see themselves. And so Rachel, we have the second largest Filipino community outside of the Philippines here and in and around. Lower mainland. So it's important. Oh, and we approved a a course last year called Filipino Language and Culture. So. The beauty of that is it was developed by a teacher and in a community where there was a lot of Filipino kids. And I, that's one of the greatest things about my job is being able to approve courses like that and. Um, and teachers doing such great things for the kids that they see every day. And so allocating, you know, resources to be able to do that. Was what we did during the, our budget. So now we have an external organization working with us. To be able to do that. And so, one, seeing, seeing themselves in in their communities. Extremely important so that your kids don't feel like they are the only ones who look the way that they do. And so we have comprehensive policies, anti-bullying policies that define bullying, outline. And so we have comprehensive policies, anti-bullying policies that define bullying, outline prevention strategies. And establish procedures for reporting and addressing incidents. Uh, then we also have programs and training. So uh, school-based educators and district-level staff are trained in. And utilize restorative justice practices as well as other trauma-informed policies. Yeah, and utilize resort of just practice as well as other trauma-informed methods. And then it's it widely promotes resources through E Race, which is a provincial. Online framework to prevent and address bullying. And then we have support systems. Um, we do have uh uh, we have a couple of programs that. Are are implemented in our district. One, we do have school liaison officers and they. When we brought them back into our s- our district uh a couple of years ago, the intention was that that it wasn't like it was before. The in the uh what we wanted to see was training, a lot of training and a lot of. Wanted a diverse workforce, so for again, kids to see themselves in in those. Um, officers and then a lot of anti-bullying training, a lot of. Uh, what you would, we would expect teachers to have. Um, we would expect of of these officers who are going to be in schools. And so we expect our staff as well to be doing these. Um, you know, we do have. Pro D-Day options for them, but then we also have additional learning uh um. Learning modules for them as well. So uh, we, like I mentioned, we have school liaison officers. We do have. Uh, Safe and Caring Schools Department, which was what replaced the school liaison officers. And then when we brought our liaison officers back in, we didn't um, remove that. Safe and caring schools because there's also a component of having. Um, like psychology professionals and counselors. Uh, in addition to a school counselor, you know, that to be able to support kids, so. That's counseling services, peer support programs as well. And then we also have a a parent and guy, a gu- a guardian involvement. Which we encourage um to be proactive in addressing by eh these issues by communicating with staff and. And monitoring their kids' behavior and their well-being. So um, I as I. You're a parent and you know that it is, it takes a village. So that's the intention of these policies is to. Uh, work together to help uh. Deal with all of the issues that we're seeing around bullying.
Right, maybe you can send me the link offline and I'll link to that underneath the podcast when it goes up so that people can see. Uh, the various uh groups and policies and procedures that you have in place.
I'd love to. And then also, we really push uh parents to uh, w- we have a kind of a flow chart, which I can also send to you, which is about. Uh, what's the term I want to use? Um. It it essentially directs parents with their issues and where to start the process. So if there are are bullying issues, you know. It can be quite frustrating and and. Fairly noted, uh quite often, there's a lot of anger there. And so we help, we help navigate our system.
Yes, I've had to have, um, I'm a grown adult, as you know, and I've had to have people take me and do some deep breathing with me.
Oh, me too, me too. And. When it's not even my own children, I I often get uh quite frustrated with the way. Things happen or or some of the stories I've heard. But that's, that's also, you know, the dynamics of our city and what we see. Such a large urban environment where we're dealing with a lot of social issues as a as a city and then. As a community, so we, you know, we have. We see it all.
Yes, um, I know that, I know that there's a lot. Um. Oh, Victoria, your uh your job, I don't envy you, but thank you so much for doing it. Um, there are so many issues uh to discuss, but I think one that is vital uh. Is indigenous education and curriculum and it's something that's really important to me. Uh, I am clearly not indigenous, but. I am always striving to learn uh and my kids are learning. And I'm wondering about that within the Vancouver School Board. So I have spoken with several. Of my indigenous guests from various nations. Um, and you know, they. I've talked about, you know, in indigenous. Education often coming from those who are not indigenous, which maybe isn't as. You know, useful. And that's not necessarily within the Vancouver School Board. It could be within another school board in B C. Uh, and I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on indigenous education and curriculum. And how vital this is as a part of learning in British Columbia.
Aside from undrip and what, you know, the we've been, um, we've. Been required to do, I think knowing, understanding and learning about our history as. A country is vital to the way that we show up for our community and. We, there's, there's, there's a lot to learn about our First Nations, Inuit, Métis and in Canada. And this is exactly where the the foundation happens, is at a school district. And this is where we start incorporating practices. Um, for a lot of cultures happens, e- especially um, our host nations. Hamakwam, Skahoma, Shokomeo, and Slavotas. They, I have. I have personally seen the impact that. Our Indigenous Education Council that we have in our in our district, the impact they have had on students in our schools and and. So some of what happens at that. That the I E C is that is. They help us, inform us on the decisions around what we're, so Eric Amber just opened the school on Oak Street. I'm not sure if you. You've driven by it, it's absolutely gorgeous. And if you go to the front door, you'll see three households. Um, well, that welcome you, that were carved locally and that incorporate the. Um, culture of the land that we're on, uh, which is great. And you walk in and there's weavings inside. And the way that the eh not only the lobby was was decorated and um built. But it tells a story and it tells a story about how uh important, including indigenous eh um. History is in in our teachings and the way that we live because eh. It's also part of the curriculum. So not only is it that, but. The dedication to living and breathing what that, you know, their culture is uh is. I I'd like to think is um, you know, at the forefront of of the job that we show up to do. And so we do have. Different agreements, we do. So being being such a large uh district is as important that we should respect and support. Uh indigenous ways of knowing and learning. And so, you know, in our land acknowledgement. Uh, it's, it was updated to say that we are learning and unlearning. Because that's also a part of the way we do things and uh. Though I sit at a table with, you know, a a board of nine trustees, the way that we structure. Everything from our meetings to the way we sit at a table is all this i- is all very colonial. And so. We're learning these different ways of doing things, which is quite beautiful and that our indigenous partners are very. Matriarchal and that's also beautiful to see the respect. Um, and the way that we've incorporated a lot of the that into the the school board. There is, we do have, there are roles in the school board that in our our district. That are specific to promoting and enhancing our three host nations cultures. And I feel really proud to share that.
That's, that's good. That's awesome. I know it's, it's been improving and I see it improving bit by bit. And hopefully that that continues.
We do have programs as well, so we're just. You know, we do have programs, so our indigenous ed programs. Integrate cultures, histories and traditions into the curriculum. And so they're designed to enhance. Um, the experience of indigenous students and then promote cultural awareness, so. Requirements for graduation. So starting in two thousand twenty-three. Twenty-four year, all students in B C are required to complete at least four credits of indigenous-focused coursework. To graduate. So, and they, which can include provincial indigenous-focused courses, First Nation language courses. Or locally-developed courses um that meet the specific criteria of that program. Um, then we also have uh at the V S B, we've established an Aboriginal Education Enhancement Agreement. And that focuses on improving educational outcomes of indigenous students. So that's through cultural relevant. Programming and support services. Then we have um cultural support services, so that's both indigenous education workers and teachers. Provide uh cultural, academic, social and emotional support. And that's for uh indigenous students. And then, yeah, and these services include parent liaisons and a- um advocacy, ensuring a holistic approach. So. Again, it, we don't know, we don't know. So we do rely on um liaisons and community partners to help. Inform us, um, which is really great and uh, a great part of my my job is showing up and. Not knowing, but not feeling guilty that I don't know. Because we're in the business of education. So it is, you know, it is encouraged to show up and to learn every single meeting I go to. Um, and lastly, we do have a commitment, an ed plan commitment. So. Our ed plan is, we, that's what we call our strategic plan. And so our ed plan. Uh, includes a commitment to reconciliation and increasing knowledge and respect for indigenous histories and cultures. And so that plan aligns with the broader goals of equity and inclusion, which we have in our our strat plan. So in addition to working with our host nations, uh, and we seek guidance in many ways through our our board standing committees and. Our Indigenous Education Council that I mentioned before. Um, and then we also host days that are really important to to. To our host nations and to us. Uh, which include National Indigenous Peoples' Day, Red Dress Day, uh National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And as I mentioned, we we try to incorporate that into everything we do. So building new schools, um, our our weavings and welcome figures at schools. Uh, Southlands, our school up uh toward U B C, that got a new house pole uh a few months ago, which was great. The unveiling was. Beautiful and kids were involved and um. It's honestly, I learned so much from going to these events and. Learning through the kids who, you know, live this life and get to eat, sleep and breathe. Um, education all day. And so it's, it's a, it's real, it's a treat. It's a treat. And then, and then eh through elders, we also have a lot of elders come and and teach us as a board and also through. Um, the district staff, but then also at schools. I get to participate in in um weaving cedar bracelets. And making indigenous drums and uh. Like just, just expanding my knowledge and experience with our our rights holders. So it is. I think that we're on the right track. And I think it's great because we keep expanding. Funding towards indigenous learners and indigenous education. Um, and then also having and creating new partnerships with uh different organizations and nations.
That's excellent. Yeah, I have to say that I have never had my children at Vancouver. Public school. So that has to be said first and foremost. They've been either in Burnaby or now I'm in South Surrey. So. Uh, we're all in British Columbia and I know some of this is provincial, but um, that is just a bit of a disclaimer that um, I'm speaking with Victoria. Uh, as Chair of Vancouver School Board and my children uh have attended B C, attend B C schools, but in other regions of the province. I just wanted to make that clear. You're clearly very ambitious and have a lot that you want to accomplish and have already accomplished, Victoria. Uh, what is next for you? Uh, you mentioned that you uh would like to be Chair again at the end of the month. Uh, when the vote vote comes up. Uh, is there anything else that you want to achieve? As Chair or anything else that you want to bring forward as something that's passionate that you really want to, passionate for you that you want to accomplish?
I have so many. I don't even know where to start, but I'll tell you a a quick story of um. Of the last couple of weeks. Uh, as we know, the election happened in the U S and. Um, I had the opportunity to travel with three of my now close friends. Uh, to the swing state of Wisconsin to get out the vote. And the deciding factor for me and why I went was. I learned that the intention of one of the candidates was to remove the Department of Education. And I started this journey with with the intention of just trying to do good locally. Uh, I think that's where a lot of impact happens. And I've slowly evolved into someone who. Knows how much we can do for the larger community. So. I spent the last week, I got home two days ago and I spent the last week knocking on doors and getting out the vote and really. Fighting for what I believe is the future of our community, which is education. It was, it was a remarkable learning experience and I would do it again in a heartbeat. This job has opened up. My eyes and my brain to what we're all capable of. And what little steps we think we're taking have such a big ripple effect uh that sometimes we don't realize. And so I invite everyone to get involved and to show up and to, yes, of course, vote. Um, but also, you know, w- bring your kids with you. If you think you can't, you know, go do this and that, you can. And we saw. We saw candidates show up at the field office and we saw people with their kids and taking pictures with the future leaders. Of the country and it was, there's no, n- no act is too small. And so when, you know, volunteer for those for your kid's school, if you have the time and resources to do that because. Your impact is great. Your impact is huge. And so don't ever think that you're not. You know, you, you don't have an impact, especially for kids like your kids who might show up to a community event. And see a face that looks like them and and see someone who's doing a job that they want to do. And think is cool or neat and wants to learn more about. So I I started this. Eh on such a small scale and I campaigned for things that are important to me, like school safety and kids. Being authentic in who they are when they show up to school. And it's now snowballed into me traveling to another country to fight for what I think is right for the pe- for people and. For, you know, just humans in general. And it's been extremely rewarding and. I love it and will continue to show up for my community and for the board uh uh that I. Sit on and the people that I respect each day. And so anyway, eh enough, enough of that.
Prime Minister next? Uh, maybe Prime Minister. What can, why can't we think big?
Thank you. But it's, it's, I just want to emphasize like just showing up, you know, I, it is so important. And you doing your podcast and introducing people to ideas or information that they don't know about. These are all such important things to help us grow and to help us learn. And, you know, uh, for people who. Have a book next to their bed that they keep thinking that they're gonna pick up and they're too tired. You know, all it takes is one. Small change in your behavior and it can snowball into traveling to another country. Volunteer your time for something you believe in. So um, for those who have the resources and have the time, I really. I'm I'm trying to just push stepping out of your comfort zone, learning something new. Going to a luncheon and talking to a stranger sitting next to you. And look where we are now, Rachel. So thank you for your time and for doing that because that is, that's. You know, that's the angle I'm I'm pushing today.
Well, I I do this podcast for very selfish reasons. I I love it and I learn so much from it, but um. I I love that listeners are enjoying it, but I s- I I I just love doing it because it's just an educational piece for me. So. All comes back to learning.
Well, and I think it's great that you're doing such different topics because the reason that why I got. Uh, hooked on listening to you is because you um, eh you interviewed a mutual acquaintance of ours. It's something I'm not even interested in, but then I heard you talking about a topic I knew nothing about. And then it it just, it sort of snowballed and it's. It's great to hear to uh so many different topics.
Yes, yes, it's, they're not light, I have to say. I'm, I mean, it's not like, you know, uh. What is your favorite skincare? Although I I I love skincare. Um, or, you know, like I said in one of my monologues, like. We talk about my date last night. It's not light listening, but it's important listening. And I I hope that people feel it's important listening. So anyway. Um, and then of course I have some monologues where I just ramble on about things that matter to me, but.
And other people, because those listeners, that is, is, is why we keep coming back.
Yes, and uh it's part of me kind of uh, you know, that that sensitive piece that I. Uh, I that I have, I I have to kind of have an outlet for it. And this is the outlet. So there we are. I end every conversation, as you probably know, with asking guests about a couple of their favorite local nonprofits. And I'm wondering if there are a couple of local ones that you'd like to highlight today.
Okay, first of all, um. I don't, I'm like, uh, where do we start? Uh, U G M, I love New and Gospel Mission, I, I serve meals there. Uh, the people who work there are incredible humans, they do great work. Covenant House, I specifically love Covenant House because uh, it, it's for youth. And they offer programming, mental health programming and everything to help develop a, a healthy life, a healthy and, and sustainable life for young people. Uh, I, I quickly mentioned earlier, Rachel, I do the sleep out at the end of February. And so anyone who wants to join my team, you're welcome to. We raise money and get a tour of their facilities and get to know more about what they do and how big their impact is. Uh, I could go on, I'm, like I mentioned, I, there's a prog- um, uh, arts program uh, that was helped, uh, developed in the, with the help of um, uh, Bob Rennie years ago, it's called Airs Artists in Residence. Um, the program is a V S B art program and uh, they work with, which you can donate to at V S B dot com, just in case anyone wants, because it is a um, a completely separate program to our, our regular um, funded programs. But it uh, c- connects students with their love of art and developing and building on, on all of those interests. So uh, that's really wonderful and it's an elementary program. And so I think, you know, there are a lot of programs for secondary uh, uh, students, but I, I do like promoting uh, arts and music for young people because it is such an important part of the way, the way that our brains develop. Um, so, so, yeah, and I could go on. So I, I have a lot that I'm involved with, that I participate in. Um, but there are so many and we do some wonderful ones. We have some great services that are specific to school board, but then also on a larger scale, community and city. So again, a shout out and a invite to anyone who wants to join me uh, to volunteer for the New Gospel Mission or Covenant House. Um, get in touch.
Yes, please do that. I think one of the guests I'm having on actually this season is joining you. I won't say who, but you can if you'd like, but maybe uh, we'll learn that later.
You know what, we'll ask him to put that call out as well when he uh, comes to speak. Uh, yeah, he, he agreed to be on my team and I think he's got an incredible story and would probably um, draw in a lot of interest for that. So please um, uh, please highlight that when you speak to him.
I will, I will do so. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, it's Victoria Young here, uh, Chair of the Vancouver School Board, who has generously uh, taken an hour plus out of her Saturday to talk with me and the listeners about education in uh, Vancouver and education overall. A generous, passionate, dedicated, kind woman. Thank you so much for being here, Victoria, I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you for having me, I love talking all things education, so you, you give me a shout anytime and I'll come back.
Well, I'll take you up on that, careful. Talk to you in Victoria.
Thank you, take care. Be kind and truly connect, you're listening to Rachel Texton Connects.